Good evening everyone, we'll call a meeting to order. George, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Rivellinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes, but standing in the minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, I'm just going to call, honey.
Oh, yes.
Any additions before we start the consent agenda?
Oh, yes, I want to talk about economic development.
Okay.
Just an update.
Add that to committee report. We'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the July 28th meeting, approval of the June finance report, a resolution for the employment, park and recreation, and claims in the amount of $338,186.82. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Moved by Rivellinsky?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Rivellinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes, as stated earlier.
And Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, before we move to the presentation by Dr. Carl Nolenberger, Darren, let's take the Kiwanis Kids' Day request first.
Sure.
And we'll get that, knock that one out.
Well, we're here at the first meeting in August, and time is just flying right past us.
It sure is.
And September 20th, the third Saturday in September, is coming up really fast. And that is traditionally Kiwanis Kids' Day. I have a map that I passed out to everyone here. It shows our parade route. I'll make sure Jason gets a look at it as well. We're asking to be able to use the parade route. I'd like to be able to start closing it off at about 9:00, 9:30, as I normally do, putting cones out and around. And then the parade will be at 10 o'clock straight up, and we'll run till close to 11 o'clock by the time it's all done. It has in the past. Again, we're going to come across on Broadway over to Main Street, turn and go north on Main up to Grimes, which is on the south side of Howard Park, along past Farmer's Market, south to the courthouse and Briggs, and then back along Briggs to the high school. I've looked over the route numerous years, and I feel that we only need two police officers out there to kind of help us through. The major traffic point is D Street and Broadway as the parade's coming out. The person that's leading the parade usually sits at the intersection of Briggs and D as the parade's coming around that way in order to get people through the D Street intersection. Again, usually the crowds are so large, and we love to see that, that traffic isn't going to move anywhere near the parade route anyway because it's going to have people standing, watching it as it goes by. So that's how we want to try to help with the police this year. Also, we would like to have temporary no parking by police order along the south side of Grimes, south of Howard Park, and then along the north side of Briggs, from B Street over to D Street. Those streets are pretty narrow. It's easier to have the no parking there just for a temporary time. The signs get picked up after the parade's done, and everything's opened back up at that point in time. We're going to have the tent on the east side of the square, as we always have. We are going to have a new exhibit this year. It's going to be kind of a surprise, so I'm just going to ask for a location for no parking on the west side of the square, on the east side of the west side of the square, the parking that's along there. And it would be just from the sidewalk crossing up to the north parking stall.
Along Central Park.
Along Central Park, which we're still going to allow traffic to flow throughout the day, all the way around the square. It won't be blocked at all, only just during the parade time itself. So this year's theme is America's Heritage, and we're looking forward to having a really good turnout, and we're always hoping for great weather.
Thanks, Darren, I appreciate that. Chief Harvey, we'll get you to sign off on the requests here.
That's fine. It's an easy thing to do.
Okay, thanks so much. Then entertain a motion to approve their requests by Kiwanis for Kids' Day, September 20th, parade route and no parking request.
Second.
Moved by Hammers, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
And I will abstain.
Great, thanks, Darren.
Providing you're not going to interfere.
All right. Doug, I'd like you to introduce our guest and tell us exactly what we're starting the process we're starting this evening.
Hey, today we have Carl Nolenberger with Gov HR USA. He's a vice president of the search firm out of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, professor at the University of Oshkosh. He's got family here in Iowa. He's visiting his children in Iowa City, I guess. And so he's going to give us a presentation on what his company has to offer in terms of services in a search for a new city administrator. So Carl?
Thank you very much. I did provide you handouts of the PowerPoint, as well as two other handouts that are right there for your information. So if you can't see the PowerPoint here, you'll be able to look at the item in front of you.
I was going to ask the city council if you want to move. I put this table over here so you can move to this side and see the screen a lot easier if you'd like to. Tony and Jessica would like to move.
Okay. I'm good. I'm just passing.
I know.
I put this table over here so you can see the screen while.
If you choose to.
I'm good, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your consideration. As the council member indicated, I got to spend this afternoon playing with grandchildren, which is always fun, to come back down to Iowa, which is where I actually started my career and went to school in Iowa City. So I want to first point out, you know, our executive recruitment and selection process. Gov HR really does believe in a tailored approach, as I indicated there, and that's what I'll be walking you through and telling you about it. It definitely is one of the most important decisions you'll make at your time on the city council, and I hope to tell you about us, as well as the process that takes place, and on how we can help you in that particular process. One of the items, since you had questions in whether to use an executive search firm, one of the additions I gave you to the PowerPoint handout has key reasons for choosing to use an executive recruitment firm. And, you know, there's just seven points there on focus. It allows you to focus in on the candidates at the post of the process. It talks about the experience we have in assessing talent, talks about the resources we have and the ability to outreach, I'll talk more about in a minute. Talks about the expertise that we bring to it, as I'll talk about my background, as well as the objectivity we bring to it, and eliminating the hidden costs that you have if you do it on your own, as well as providing consistency. Our philosophy, very clear, we really truly believe in providing service. We're here to meet your needs during the process. We really truly believe in integrity and providing open information to everybody. We're totally open to you as the client on everything we know about various candidates. And having all 20 of our consultants, having worked in the field, we tend to find out a lot of information, know a lot of information about a lot of the candidates. We definitely try to build trust, provide you with honest assessment of the candidates, and we definitely try to make sure that there's respect in the process. We're well regarded in the profession, and we really respect you for the roles that you play in this particular area because it's difficult to be an elected official. I know from all the years that I've been watching it, from the sub-280 elected officials that I've worked for over my career. Our experience, we have a Midwest presence. We do operate nationally, but we have an emphasis here in the Midwest. And our main office is in the Chicago area. We have offices, obviously, in Wisconsin, myself from Oshkosh, and Delaware, and Arizona. As I mentioned, we have approximately 20, we have 20 consultants that work in our area, all of whom are experienced professionals in the field. In this particular case, the consultant assigned would be myself, Carl Nolenberger. In my case, I was a, I spent 30 years working in city government. My very first position was in Iowa City as the Assistant Director of Finance, my first public service position. After I graduated, I worked in Cedar Rapids for a couple of years as an accountant, then Iowa City was my first public service position. Went on to be a Director of Finance out in Colorado, Assistant City Manager. My first city administrator position was Muscatine, Iowa. And then I went from there to Richfield, Minnesota, to Beaumont, Texas, to Duluth, Minnesota, to St. Louis County, Minnesota, to Lake County, Illinois. So from $18,000 to $650,000 over time. So I've been a city administrator, I've been a city manager, I've been an administrative assistant to the mayor, which essentially had more authority than the city manager does in a lot of cities, happened to lose, so it's a different. So I understand there's different responsibilities that go with different positions, and you have to really find out exactly what that particular position's responsibilities are. I've been, I've spent 15 years now in consulting in academia. When I was a city manager, and still today, I've built up numerous networks. I was president of the International City County Management Association, which is all the 10,000 members here in the United States that are in city management, as well as around the rest of the world, that have city manager type of positions. And I've stayed in close contact with peers via the state associations, as well as the international association meetings, which is coming up again here in September, for the 100th conference of the ICMA coming up in September. So I feel like I can bring to you a good understanding of city management, city administration, and helping you to find the next person. The backup would be Heidi Voorhees, who's the president of our firm. In the event I get run over by a Mack truck some night, you always want to have backup during the process, I always keep her totally advised as to what's happening. In this case, she would be the one who would back up in the event that something happened. Just an example of some of the recent recruitments I put on the wall for you there. Some of them, I would look, put it on there, West Liberty, Iowa, which I did last year. But I also did Washington, Iowa, two years ago, and Burlington, Iowa, three years ago. And currently, I'm finishing up one for Battle Creek, Michigan, with the interviews next week on that one. And one, as I mentioned to your council member, one of our candidates' names is Stephen Rasmussen. Kept thinking maybe there was a relationship there, since he used to be the city manager of Atumwa, before he went down to Jefferson City, Missouri.
No, yeah.
No.
But I have numerous experiences, as indicated there, and encourage you to contact any of those as it relates to understand the references for us. Our process, the tailored process, but basically has some flexibility. We start off with that community organization and position assessment, and to me, it's one of the most important steps. I spend a couple of days here in your community, meeting with each one of you individually, meeting with the people who report and work directly with the administrator individually, and then meeting with whatever community leaders that you think would be of value to, for me to meet with and get an understanding of what it is you're looking for in the position. The very best administrator in the world may not be the best administrator in your community in 2014. So you have to find somebody who matches the culture and matches the organization. Having been a city manager in Beaumont, Texas, and a city administrator type in Duluth, Minnesota, I discovered there's completely different cultures, and you can work really effectively in some cultures and organizations, and not so effectively in others, regardless of your skills. So it's really important, critical in my mind, for me to meet with those people, interview them, and find out what skills you're looking for in the position. And that would really help me to understand too exactly what it is your city administrator position is responsible for, what skills you need in that position. I found over time that city administrators have virtually the same skill, skills needed as city managers do. They just have different roles or responsibilities outlined specifically in their job announcement, and they need to make sure that they understand those as they're walking into a position. Out of that discussions, which take those first couple of days down here, I would develop the recruitment brochure, which is trying to put down in writing what it is that I assimilated over that period of time. Obviously, we'd discuss the community, but it would also then discuss the experience and education needed for the position, and the management skills and traits, personality traits, that you're looking for. And I try to put down on paper what it is I heard over that period of time, but it's even more important for me to have it ingrained in my brain so that when I'm talking with potential candidates, I know what it is that I can assess them based upon what it is you're looking for. The next step in the process is to do the candidate contact and open recruitment, and that's where we contact candidates. We have a database of all managerial people in every city in the United States, in every state in the United States. And what we do is put together a database that we'd be sending emails out to first. I'd probably do 700 to 800 emails to people, asking them if they're interested, or if they know of somebody who's interested, if they could refer the document, the profile document, onto them. In addition, I make sure I contact the boards of directors of the state associations, such as the Iowa City County Management Association Board of Directors and adjoining states. We encourage, we suggest that you should do a national search, certainly recognizing that you may want to put in, to have in the profile, that Iowa experience is preferred for the purpose that they may then find that that's the best person to fit. But if you do the national search, frequently, we find people who want to come back home. They're out in California, but they want to come back home to Iowa, or they want to do something of that sort. I know in the three searches I've done here recently in Iowa, all the final candidates that got the position all happened to be from Iowa, both Washington, Burlington, and West Liberty ones. But that's not always the case. You may find that there's others that you find are more, better fits for your particular community. I also make lots of phone calls to people that I know in the profession to try and make sure that we're getting the people to provide their candidacy for you. The complete, we do, we make sure that we do a complete process coordination, acknowledging receipt of applications. And then what I do is the initial screening. I put them together, a matrix of all the candidates, so that you can see exactly, if you want to, you can see exactly what their education is, what their experience is, and what their pluses and minuses are. And then I interview the prospective candidates. I prefer to do it by Skype, if they have Skype available, or else I can do it by telephone. And I interview usually 20 to 25 candidates, depending upon how many apply. Typically, we get about 50 or so applications in most communities for a city administrator or city manager position. I interview about 20 of them to assess whether they fit what it is that you said you wanted in the profile that was put together. And then we narrow that down to 10 to 12 candidates that we present to you. And what I would do is give you a booklet of all the information on those candidates, and then I would attend a meeting with you and present to you my findings or my assessments based upon my interviews with them, as well as two references in that first round, as well as all kinds of Google checks as to what things are going on with those individuals. Then we facilitate the selection of those finalists. We usually suggest that you have five or six that you actually invite to interview here locally, and that you, we help you with creating the questions, the interview questions that you would like to have, and arrange for the, we will also then arrange for additional background checks on all the candidates, the legal background checks, criminal, driving, credit, and education verification, as well as additional reference checks. One of the things, another handout I gave you there was interview options, and that's just my write-up of the various types of things you may want to consider during the actual interview process, and that was two days that you'd have candidates here. And I gave you this in response to one of the questions that the Commissioner Laurie had given me about what involvement there is in the community, by the community. As I mentioned in the first part in the profile, I usually suggest that I should be meeting with some of your community leaders to get their feedback. But then during the actual interview process, lots of communities will take, for instance, number three on that interview options, and actually have a citizen panel that interviews the candidates, in addition to the city council interviewing the candidates, which is number two. And many times, they'll do number seven, which is a community engagement option, where on one of the evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 or whatever, they'll have just an open house for people to come in and meet the candidates, and then provide you feedback either by a written survey document as they leave, or by Survey Monkey, or whatever other process. So I just lay out all those options for you. I usually don't put those out to you in advance, but when I saw one of the questions about what community involvement would you suggest, I thought this would provide you some of those types of background. So with that, we then prepare the interview questions, as I mentioned, and the procedures, set up a complete schedule for you relating to that on those two days, and facilitate the final interviews and selection. And if you'd like, we're happy to be involved with the negotiations with the finalist candidate that you've selected in the process. The, one of the questions also that Councilmember Laurie had asked was about any guarantee in writing in the proposal that I think all of you received, there is a provision in there on the guarantee that we provide, that is on page seven of that, where it talks about if you don't select somebody from that first round of interviews, we continue on working with you at no additional cost other than out-of-pocket costs, if there's additional travel. And if for some reason the candidate leaves before two years are up, we would also provide you a no-cost search, except for the out-of-pocket costs for the, for a second search.
Carl, is there any stipulations on the reason, on what you just said? You said if for some reason the candidate leaves within two years, from his side or our side, is what you're saying?
It's unconditional as far as providing you that.
Right.
I should mention to you, in case you're not aware of it, that if a candidate leaves before two years without some justifiable reason, it's actually a violation of the Code of Ethics of the International City County Management Association. You make a minimum commitment of at least two years.
Right.
And if you leave before that time, you get a Code of Ethics violation from the International Association. But there's no condition, if somebody leaves, leaves you before that two years, we will provide that second search at no cost.
Right, thank you.
Other than the out-of-pocket costs, once again.
Can you explain a little bit about what facilitate final interviews means? What exactly do you do for the facilitation of that?
Facilitate the final interviews? We set up the whole schedule for a two-day purpose. We get the, we schedule the candidates to get in here at the right times. We set up, for instance, in Battle Creek, I'm setting up tours of the communities, getting the department head to give that. They wanted to have meetings with the department heads, so I'm setting up times for each of the candidates to meet with each of the, to meet with the group of department heads. They wanted to have a community engagement, so we're setting up a community engagement session from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock on Friday night on August 22nd. They wanted to have the employee, the candidates attend the employee picnic, which happened to be going on that same day. And then on Saturday, the council will be doing the interviews with the candidates, and I arrange with the candidates to be there, present at exactly the time that they're going forth, and so forth. I set up, I provide you with a library of questions for you to ask to the candidates, and you choose which ones you think are appropriate, or create your own. Provide you an evaluation tool to do that, and I work with you to help you narrow it down, if you want to do second interviews, for two or three that afternoon. And then you make the decision, obviously. I don't make the decision at that point, but I'm facilitator of helping you get to that final conclusion to make your decision.
Are you doing any kind of personality assessments or evaluations prior to?
We provide that as an option. The Myers-Briggs test instrument we provide is an option that costs an additional fee for each candidate. I also, for instance, in Battle Creek, I'm providing the Thomas Kilman Conflict Mode Instrument and how candidates deal with conflict situations, and also the COB Learning Styles Inventory. Those, I'm doing it no cost, but I'm getting the candidates to fill out the instruments, and I'm providing an evaluation and assessment to the city on those particular items. The schedule is unique, is obviously unique to everybody, and we're flexible, but we do find that it's usually about a 12-week process from the beginning of the starting of the profile interviews to the time that you actually select somebody. We try to provide a detailed recruitment schedule, we will at the very beginning, once you, if you were to select us, we would provide you a detailed recruitment schedule so you know exactly when everything's going to happen out in advance, so that you can plan your schedule on specific days that you know things are going to be taking place. We communicate constantly throughout the process. I usually set up an email list with all of your names on it, provide you a status report, at least bi-weekly, so that you know what's happening. We're accessible and available throughout the process by telephone, email, or whatever other method you would prefer. Obviously, the path to success is requiring a partnership between yourself and us, and viewing it that way. And it's really important to present the position. The community is a great opportunity, and it's one of the reasons for the profile. And in our case, we're known for our process. We're known for approaching a good group, a record of replacements, and, for instance, and even people who don't get the position, everybody I interviewed for Battle Creek, the 26 people I interviewed, they selected five to interview. I called the other 21 personally to let them know exactly what their status was, because they're people that are in the profession, and they deserve the respect that goes on in the profession. So that's essentially a summary. I tried to make it short, as I was directed to by one of your council members.
How long does the process typically take from start to finish?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
How long does the process typically take from start to finish?
12 weeks.
Okay. Until we have candidates that are ready to interview, or that we're hired somebody within 12 weeks?
From the start of the day I arrive to do the profile, it's usually about a 12-week process, to the point that you've done the interviews and have hired somebody.
Okay.
January 1st is a reasonable?
Have somebody hired by January 1st? Easily.
And you do mention in your PowerPoint about you aid in negotiation of contract. Do you help consult on competitive wage and benefits and what we need, where we need to be for certain candidates?
Yes, and if you want me to, I can do that upfront and provide you that information. If you're a member of the Iowa League of Municipalities, which I believe you are, they have a database of all salaries here in Iowa of city administrators and managers, and they provided that to me in the past at my request, because you're a member. I also have that information available for surrounding states, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Illinois, and so forth, and can provide you that information, and so that you can see how you're comparable, and establish, before you set the salary, you would see your comparabilities.
Carl, is there a standard schedule of fees? Do you do like this as a standard price, or like, is it hourly per your time, or how does it work?
Yes, the proposal that Hope made me see, right, on page?
What's in the four, in folder?
Six of that proposal, the costs are shown at the bottom. The recruitment fee is, you pay us is $12,500, the recruitment expenses not to exceed is $4,500. That's consultant travel, postage, telephone support services, adverber, and advertising costs is estimated at $1,500. Can only be exceeded if you.
I see, so, and you were saying that, for instance, some cities wouldn't have you involved in the final interview process or something, or you're saying you can help with that if we want? So that's, is that ordinarily you're there for those interviews?
When you say involved, I'm involved in doing the logistics in the final process, but I don't sit there, I'm not part of the interviews. I sit in the background at that time.
Right.
At that point, if you're doing them in here, I'm going to be sitting back in my corner.
How long are your telephone?
You're making the decision.
How long are your telephone interviews with these candidates? I mean, how extensive are they?
They go anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour.
Okay.
I really do prefer to do them by Skype, although I have to admit, some people, as I mentioned, some people haven't learned how to do Skype interviews yet.
So when you?
When I was talking with one candidate for Finance Director. When I was talking with one candidate for a finance director position in Garland, Texas, I was interviewing the candidate, and she came on Skype, and she was in her nightgown.
Oh. Well, at least she had a nightgown on.
Another candidate I was interviewing for a city manager position, he was sitting at his desk, but right behind, right there was this pornographic picture.
So after you've done your interview and you present us with the final candidates, do you have a summary of that interview that you're providing us?
Yes, I write up a summary of the interview right after I do that, and sometimes councils want to see my notes. Usually what I do is just relay them to you verbally when I come to present the final candidates. But if you want to see my notes, I'm happy to provide those to you, too.
Okay, I mean, are you giving impressions and comments like that, or, I mean, what are we getting as far as that kind of information?
Well, what I do is, I ask specific questions. Why are you interested in this position? What specific skills do you think you have that best, need this position? What are your, if you, if you're looking for somebody good in finance and budget, I ask, tell me about your budget and finance skills, or tell me about your economic development skills. What are you, what's your management style? What's your personal style of interacting with elected officials and citizens? What's your greatest strength? What's your greatest weakness? Is there anything out there that's embarrassing, that might create problems for you in the future? Those types of questions.
Okay.
Carl-
Then the very bottom line, or is under comments, is my assessment.
Okay.
Carl, let's say you get, receive 50 applications, and you've chosen 20 to interview. Could you give us a very brief synopsis of why those 30 were not selected? And could we also have our personnel committee review those applications to see if they agree with your assessment about who made the top 20?
Everything's available to you if you want it. Most cities don't want to let, but yes, because in essence, what I could do is, I could provide you with all of the, I could provide you with all the candidate materials, but then in addition, what I put together, I call that matrix at the very beginning, which literally is in Excel form.
So you got-
Each one of the candidates, their experience, my comments about it, and I rank them in tiers, tiers one through five. And three, four, and five, I usually do not interview.
Okay, good, and, all right, fine. And then of the 20, let's say that you are going to interview, and you're going to distill it down to a smaller number, same process there as well, matrix and top. Okay. We just, yeah, we don't want to let anyone fall through the cracks, that another set of eyes might have said, no, wait a minute, I think we do want to take another look at this person, or go-
I don't have any problem providing you all the information. You could have a, you know, set of books here of all the candidates. I would email you their applications or whatever, and you can have a book here and come in and take a look at them, or however you'd like to do it. If you want to go through those, yes.
Right. Thanks.
Because you may see something I missed, but I, that's why, to me, that two days I spent onsite, getting an understanding of what you're looking for, is crucial from my perspective.
Right, good.
Top 20, how many do you, for, usually for interviews to the council?
I'm sorry?
In most cities, of the top 20 that you interview, how many do you refer on for us to interview by, or?
The, I usually, well, what I, in the past, what I've done is provided a book of 10 to 12 candidates. And then that's when I come and visit with you and tell you, essentially, we do my notes, we tell you my assessment of them based upon my interviews of them, as well as the two, first two reference checks. We do two reference checks before that meeting, and we do the Google background checks. Sometimes they forget to tell me things that are, might be embarrassing when I ask them that question, and the Google checks do that. For the final finalist candidates, we do a LexisNexis check, which is more intensive article examination, as well as two more reference checks, as well as what we call an Oracle Report, which is criminal, driver's record, credit, and education verification check. So when you're interviewing the final five or six, you'll know everything there is to know about that person.
So, should I understand, so you call the references twice and go a little deeper the second time?
We call four, over the period, we call two different references before we meet with you, with the 10 to 12, and then we call two additional references after that.
But do you make-
In the first round, we don't always call their current, anybody who's a current employer, because it might jeopardize their situation, but when they're invited for interview, their names almost always go public, and we do ask that we can call their current, one of their current employer references.
Do you ever get into, like, you know, they may say, we'll talk to so-and-so, you know, but maybe there's other people or other council members in their community, or, in other words, do you only check the people that they give you, or do you sometimes look for others?
I understand your comment there, it gets a little difficult for us to call a reference that they haven't given us. What I frequently do is call the neighboring city administrator, the neighboring city manager, who I know, and ask if there is anything going on here, and it's beginning to feel a little strange, do you know anything happening here? And while that isn't a formal reference, I certainly keep my notes as to what's happening there.
I suppose there would be nothing to preclude us from making our own investigations as well?
Actually not. I've seen actual, sometimes cities will, actually, the councilmembers will call once they're down to the finalists. The names are public anyway, they'll call people they know, or call somebody at the Chamber of Commerce, or call a council member, and those types of things, I see that happening frequently.
Do you think we might have 50 candidates for this position, or more?
I would guess at least 40 to 50, would be my guess, if we do the outreach. I know a city in Wisconsin didn't use an executive search, and they're asking us not to do one. They had 13 candidates. It's a town of about 9,000, very desirable place to live. They had nine candidates, weren't happy with them. They've asked us to take over that search and start it from fresh, so.
How much would the fact that, you know, the question's going to come up from the candidates themselves, who am I replacing, and, you know, we have had two city administrators over the last four years, is that going to be an issue for some people that are applying, thinking that we might have a little bit of a trigger about-
They weren't not good people to work with?
Are we difficult to work with? So anyway, how much would you anticipate that could be a question or an issue that some candidates may have? And certainly, they're going to ask us that.
It would definitely be a question that would come up, especially as I contact candidates, and that's why in that two-day process, I would ask intensely what the circumstances were.
Right.
And then I also would find out what each of your viewpoints are for the future, because I would want to be able to say to that candidate, give them an honest appraisal of what the potentials are for the next 10 years here.
Right, and, yeah, and the city administrator prior to the, to those two was here 28 years, so there is some balance.
So that's an average of, it's an average of eight, nine years.
Good, but thank you, that's good, that's a good answer, that's what we're looking for. Any other questions, counsel? I think, yeah, we, obviously, we had a lot of prepared questions, but we don't need to run through those because the presentation was very thorough. Carl, we really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
And as Doug probably let you know, there are a couple of other firms that we will be interviewing, and we thank you again.
Okay.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, next we'll move on to our resolutions and action items, and the first is, you recall, I believe a month ago, at our meeting, we had a gentleman that approached us about waiving jurisdiction for extraterritorial zoning for a lot that was going to be subdivided in the Prairie Lake subdivision. At the time, we were advised that we didn't need to take any action if we weren't going to exercise that. John, it looks like it's come back to us, because they want some record of our not exercising that jurisdiction.
Mr. Farrar is here with his attorney. Basically, what they want is a resolution that says exactly that, that we're declining, so they can show it in an abstract title and be on with the things they need to as far as the real estate.
Okay, thank you.
That's what you have.
Thank you. Counsel, I think you recall, the decision at that time was to take no action, maybe just, in essence, being the simplest way to deal with it, but we're asking now to just go on record through resolution, so if everyone understands that situation is willing to-
Move to approve resolution.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Revolinski. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have our annual road use tax report that Joy has prepared. You've had that for review. If you have any questions for Joy, you can shoot them to her now. If not, we entertain a motion to approve the annual report.
Move to approve annual report.
Okay, move by Hamilton to approve.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
I did all that work, and nobody's going to ask me a question.
Yeah, Joy.
I have a question.
This is the comments section.
I have a question. Is there anything in particular that you would point out to us of interest?
Not really. I was just pretty excited that we're, after I finished, the ending balance matched my finance report balance.
That's great.
So I was pretty excited, yeah.
A tribute to you.
So, yeah, it's just, it's just showing, you know, the road use fund is pretty restricted, and it just shows the revenue coming in and the, and expenditures going right back out. And we didn't, Daryl's pretty good, he didn't spend all the money that he got, so we still have a-
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah.
So, yeah, he's got a balance a little over $200,000, so he's been, he's doing pretty good.
Thanks, Joy. Any other questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, this next item is an action item regarding two promissory notes that were part of a tax credit program for low-income housing on properties that we had made agreements with last year to loan as part of this agreement, $30,000, and that money would come out of our balance in Logan Apartments. It would be paid back over a 15-year period of time. It would be guaranteed by a cash equivalent, and it will have a UCC financing filing. Again, this is something that's come through ways and means and have been approved by the council at one point, but the promissory notes have not been approved and signed. We will be making this loan in September, I believe. Is that correct, Joy?
Yes, yes.
John, do you have any comments on?
I look at them all.
Okay, thank you. So then, entertain a motion to accept and approve the promissory notes for RD Fairfield LLP and RD Fairfield II LLP. Both notes are for $30,000 each.
Move to approve.
Move by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hamilton. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have a public hearing on the plans and specifications and form of contract for the pool project. We will be going to the bid process very soon, so your approval tonight for plans and specifications, this is public hearing. I'll open that at this time, see if there's any comment on those plans specifications.
Didn't this already go to bid?
No.
No, it's coming up.
No, it's, it's coming up, and then-
Construction today.
So seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing, ask if there are any questions for the council.
I meant, I didn't mean that we'd already received bids on it. I meant, it's already been out for bid.
Yeah, yeah, bids are out, yeah.
We received them on the 21st.
So, Melanie, any comment on those? Give us just kind of some of the basics that are, that are in these specifications.
Well, there was a pre-bid meeting today, and more than one contractor showed up, so that's always good news when you're bidding. Several local contractors showed interest as well. The engineer's estimate from Burback on the base bid, this project consists of lots of alternates to get the things that everyone wants but knows that the budget's tight, such as a three-meter diving board versus a one-meter, an additional swim lane, those are just alternates in the project, so we should have firm costs on those. And when the bids come in, we can make the decision on how all of those things we want will tie into the actual budget. But the engineer's estimate on the base bid is $2,833,000, and the-
What's the total with alternates?
Total with alternates, we, I do not have all of the alternate costs from Burback.
But probably over 3.8 million?
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably over 4 million.
By the time you include the Burback's fees and all of that stuff, it will be over the budget amount.
Right, so essentially, when we receive these, and we know what those alternate bids are, and we've internally budgeted $3.8 million towards the pool, we'll be able to make a determination about what would go into it.
Yes, yep.
And what's the status update about Burback and the local contractors? Why did they not do that?
I believe what they did was, they faxed out to only the Fairfield, only people with a Fairfield address, and did not include, for example, you guys that would not have a Fairfield, well, I guess you would have had a Fairfield, maybe the RLS didn't have a Fairfield.
But the point is that what they did was they didn't give the contractors subs that were local.
They, what they did was they sent a fax to the local contractors saying the project was coming. So they do not, if none of the local contractors come back to Burback and say, we're interested in the projects, the general contractors were not receiving names of local contractors.
Why not?
I don't have an answer on that one.
That's the way I thought it was going to happen. I mean, not only, you know, letting local contractors know, but the generals know that who the locals were.
I can, I will tell Andy to just put that list, when someone calls in for a plan holders list, to send the list of all the local contractors. And I've got two lists, one of just Fairfield contractors and one of local Southeast Iowa-type contractors. I'll have them send the Southeast Iowa contractors list with the plan holders list.
Okay.
So, and several of the generals asked today, for example, no electricians came to the pre-bid meeting today, so they were asking who were the electrical subs in the area.
Right, yeah, okay.
One did show up later.
One did show up later, yep.
I mean, that was the point of us preparing that, and I just don't know why they didn't.
I will have them send that out with the plan holders list, yeah.
Melanie, how many did, did show up for the meeting today? How many contractors?
Oh, there was about eight or so, but there were two that will bid all three divisions. There's three divisions, there's the general, which is the underground and the earthwork, the pool, which is the concrete work, and then the mechanical, which is more the mechanical building, the pumps, the filters, and so on. And so there were two that will bid all three, and then there were a couple that were going to bid just the mechanical.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Melanie? Then I entertain a motion to approve the plan specifications contract.
Move to approve.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? Out of all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have several items regarding our Highway 34 TIF, and first is the amendment number one. This is a public hearing. I'll open that at this time and ask if there's any public comment on the proposed amendments for Highway 34 TIF District. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. You have a consultation report from Melanie that indicates that on Friday, or it's first, when the meeting was held for the tax authorities, that there really wasn't any one that showed up at that time, so that tells me there's no objection to this. And Melanie, if you would just lead us through some of those elements before we go into the resolution.
If you, most of the information you need is in that resolution. If you, most of the information you need is in that resolution. I was going to find the correct page for you. Page 22 shows the map. The original urban renewal area included the Community First Credit Building and then the four acres behind that adjacent to Walmart. This amendment expands the area to include all of Walmart. Not that we're expecting anything there, but it would allow the city to use any of the tax increment on realigning Walmart's Drive or something like that if it is needed to develop that area. But then it also includes the former Whitney property, that is the site for the new gym, which will allow the city to use the tax increment on the gym project. And somewhere in here, there is a table of the projects.
Looks like page 12.
Yep. We listed four items in this with a total, in this amendment, a total not to exceed of $960,000. Obviously, unless additional things get built, the small changes to the community, the small but important changes to the Community First Credit Union aren't going to pay for all of these things. So this is in anticipation of this area continuing to grow. It includes the sidewalk improvements at 12th and Burlington, which are now being funded through Daryl's department and the CTG grant. Then there is the extension. We've talked, as the area by Walmart grows, giving pedestrian thoroughfare parallel to Burlington but not next to it, to get pedestrians off of Burlington. That is the $680,000. Crosswalks and push buttons at 12th, or at Ninth End Burlington, that would be to increase the safety of that intersection with Roosevelt and Pool Development. If we wanted to do the color-integrated crosswalks and all of that, that's what that budget there is for. And, oh, I got my mix up. The second one, for $680,000, is for the road out to West, or out to the Walmart area. The last one, for $100,000, is for the pedestrian thoroughfare out to Walmart. So these are all hopeful things in the future. The first item is the only one we have going. And then as we go down here, item two on page 13 talks about sending some of these funds towards the recreation facility, leaving it very open to how you can designate those funds to the recreation facility. So it opens up a lot of different things that could be funded with this urban renewal district.
Question, Melanie. So, okay, this extension of 26th Street to connect West Burlington Avenue, to connect with West Burlington Avenue, that's a street going in by Community First there, or that's like the, right, that was the proposed, like, driveway going into Walmart that was going to turn into 26th Street? Is that right?
Yes. Yep.
In order to, what, at the time, we were thinking to connect with the property behind Community First, which we had some interest in developing, which is off the table now?
Not as interested, I believe.
Not as interested.
It's not a high priority. It's not completely off the table, so we're not, you know, going to take this out of here, but I think the priorities would be with the gym.
So what we're saying in this resolution is that we could spend it on this, but we don't have to spend it on that?
Correct.
And we can reallocate it towards the gym if we want?
Right. Yep. So then, yeah, the stuff on page 13 is what allows you to put the money towards the gym.
Okay. Any other questions, council? So then, what we're approving then is the resolution to determine this economic development area and the designated uses within it. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Move to approve resolution.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any other discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we have first reading for amending ordinance 1102, and that'll be for providing general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property within this amended Highway 34 West Business District. Again, this will be first reading, so entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve ordinance from the first or second reading.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin to approve from the first or the second reading. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, council, we will be moving into a time period where we will be selling bonds for some of the work that's going on, and this first will be the money for the construction of the Pilegrove Savings Road on South Main and off of South Main. So we would need to set a public hearing on August 21st for the approval of the issuance of $750,000 in general obligation capital loan notes. Entertain a motion to set August 25th.
So move.
Second. Moved by Revolinsky, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thanks. Next, we have a resolution accepting the engagement of our council, which would be Allers &amp; Cooley for the work that we are going to be doing in this bonding area. Obviously, I think you're all very familiar with the firm. We've used them quite extensively in the past. We do need a resolution to approve their engagement in this process.
Move to approve resolution.
Second. Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. Also, council, next item would be to set a public hearing for the rezoning of 300 West Kirkwood from B1 to B2.
R2.
R2, sorry. This would begin August 25th, so we'll set a public hearing for August 25th.
So move.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. We are moving into our CDBG grant process, and one of the, again, that's for our facade restoration program. One of the first items that we'll need to do is approve the policies for CDBG. You have a letter and a list of the different policies there. Area 15 Regional Planning is our grant administrator, so they'll be running these, running us through these, so we would need to approve the policies this evening.
So move.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton to approve policies, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. And then we'll be awarding the Architectural Services for the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Project. Melanie, if you could give us, give the council a description of the meeting that was held last Monday, I believe, and that was with our Downtown Revitalization Committee that was pointed some time ago. They got together the first time, and if you'll describe the meeting and what they went over.
So at the meeting, the committee members who were there, we discussed the purpose of the committee, but the main purpose of the meeting was to start and review the proposals from the architects. There were two architects that had submitted proposals, RDG out of Des Moines and Curtis Architecture out of Atamwa. So the group talked about it then, but really, most of them wanted to take it home and have an opportunity to look at it. So they took home the proposals. They were each given the scoring criteria, and all of the committee members who were in town during this last week, they reviewed it and provided their scores, and that's what you have on your attachment. And based on the scores, the committee's recommendation is to select Curtis Architecture of Atamwa as the architect on the facade project.
Melanie, how many members on the committee and how many were in town?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight committee members, and I got scores from six.
Okay, thank you.
And then Jonathan Littman is not an official committee member, but he also attended the meeting and is providing good feedback. He chose not to participate in this selection, but does want to be part of the committee. So he did not have a score, even though we did talk with him.
Okay. For those of you who don't know, Jonathan is a local architect, and he was invited to the meeting in advisory capacity to help steer the committee members. I was able to attend the meeting just by conference call for a brief period of time, was not involved in the discussion about the two architects. Obviously, RDG provided the first phase of the application and provided drawings. Curtis, Melanie and I did meet with for a couple hours several weeks ago, and I was very impressed with the company as well and what they're doing. They're doing Atamwa's project right now. I found it to be very professional and creative, good out-of-the-box thinker, so I guess I wasn't surprised the committee came up with this recommendation. So then, council, we entertain your approval to give this contract to Curtis Architecture of Atamwa.
So move.
Okay, moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hammuss. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed the same sign? Thank you. And then, final item would be approval of the sponsored projects allocation. Melanie, if you could run that, run through that for us as well.
This is not an action that is required by the state or the people giving you the money. It's not required by SRF. This is more of making sure that all the councils on the same page as where the money is going to be allocated. You know, of course, if the sewer project, something happens to the sewer project and the funds, this $2.6 million does not come through, obviously, you know, you're not bound to give, for example, Maharishi a half a million dollars. They know that this is contingent upon the sewer project moving forward. But this just helps us know that you guys know where we're headed, and as we start to negotiate things with all of these parties involved, that we've got the council's support on this. I will say...
Melanie, you know, we really haven't had, I don't think the council's had a chance, brief explanations about each one.
And I will say, Scott Tim has been working on a press release describing all these projects, so we'll get something good out in the papers the next couple days to give more detail on how all this works. But the money that the city is eligible for is based off of a percent of the loans that are being taken out for the Step 1 and wastewater treatment plant. The original application was written similar to this, but the final kind of allocation was for the university to receive half a million dollars. They have eight different sites, including rain gardens, pipe, what sort of, taking the streams, some culverts out and making it more of an open channel. They have the eight projects that is well over their half a million dollars, and so they will be working on narrowing those eight projects down. The Soil Water Conservation District has a quarter of a million, but they will be matching that with property owner funds for ponds, stabilization structures, terraces, things that will slow down the water and the sediment loss throughout the entire watershed. We did recommend to the Soil Water Conservation District that they prioritize landowners in the upstream part of the watershed, because it will have the most impact on the city if upstream watershed users receive the money. They will administrate and design all of that stuff. It's, they'll use their standard process for this. Then the Crow Creek stabilization is still a little bit in process, but there's four places, particularly at the bridges where the trail crosses Crow Creek and the Frye Property, where they're seeing scouring and erosion of the bank that could cause damage to both the bridges. But there's also some places where the sewer system, as well as Middle Glasgow Road, are starting to see some effects of Crow Creek. So we'll be putting in some stabilization rock, some tree plantings and some things like that to help minimize the infrastructure damages. The other city projects for the $100,000, Sean and Daryl have some storm sewer connections that they want to get disconnected, and we're still going through where their priorities lie on that. Then there is the pervious parking at the rec center, which we've talked about before. And the green infrastructure hands-on workshops, we were told that we cannot use this money specifically for education, to let people know about the benefits of green infrastructure. So, but they will allow us to use it for materials. And Scott has received some grant money from the Extension Office to pay for his organizational time, but he'll be doing some hands-on workshops throughout the city over the next couple years, so that all of our residents, our local contractors, can have some practice in this infrastructure, and then hopefully, you know, grassroots movement as to keep these types of things going on without the city, or within the city. So I'm extremely excited for that. And the VAC truck attachment, what is, the VAC truck is a sanitary sewer truck that cleans out the sewers. We can buy an attachment with the monies that will help clean out the pervious parking lots, as you're aware. The one at the Civic Center has a lot of buildup in it, and it's not allowing the water to percolate, so an attachment to help clean out only that one, but the one at the rec center. And then the rest are fees, contingencies. These are the numbers that were put into the agreement. I'm not going to say that I need all of it. Now that we have a scope outlined, I will work on an engineering agreement for these projects, but that's what was in the initial budget for all of these.
What is your plan for pervious pavement at the rec center?
Like, what type of material? The one parking lot that we have done were the pervious pavers. We work closely with an urban conservationist in Iowa City, but we, I will take suggestions.
My suggestion is that we don't do it. So I've been against that from the beginning, because I think, obviously, spending another $60,000 on something to clean out pervious pavement and manpower to do so isn't a wise decision. And I know it's more expensive than just installing a parking lot. I know the thinking behind it is, because we're not going to get a parking lot if we don't go this route, but it just does not make sense to me, and I don't think it's a wise use of these funds. That's my, I know, I know not everybody agrees with me, but that's what I think.
I have a general question, Melanie. So this is, these are like extra funds that are available to the city because we're taking out this big, big loan.
These are grant funds, right?
These are grant funds.
Instead of paying your full two and a quarter interest, 1% of that interest goes into this pot that then you can give out as grant money.
And so we've applied for this grant money in the name of all these projects? Is that, is that we're applying in the name of these projects that we're approving here now, or...
You have already applied in this name, and you received the money. Now, I guess there's just been a lot of questions from stakeholders in this, and, I mean, the concern that Jessica brought up has been tossed around, so I guess I wanted to bring this forward as a action by the council.
I guess the question is, you know, it seems like, I know, we already got the money. We've been approved for all these projects. So I guess, just backing up, when we saw that this $2.7 million was available to us, could we have used it to just pay off part of the loan ahead of time? They don't let you do that. You have to spend it on good stuff that's going to help you.
This is, this is part of Iowa legislation as far as the Clean Water Act is concerned. This is, this is a reduction in the amount of interest that you will actually end up paying on your money for all of the projects. This is based off of...
Step 1 and the treatment plant.
Step 1 and the treatment plant. So you're talking over $20 million that you're borrowing in order to do this, and this $2.6 million, $2.7 million comes from the reduction of interest rate that we would have to pay back. So instead of, instead of paying 2.25% on... So instead of paying 2.25% on $20 million, we're going to pay 1.25% on $20 million over the life of the note, as long as some of that money that we are saving in interest is diverted to the Clean Water Act use-
Projects.
For these projects.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you. So are we looking for a resolution to-
A simple motion.
Yeah, I think the essence of this is there's been a lot of work and a lot of discussion between the Carrot's Committee, the work that Melanie's been doing with both the-
There's MUM, Trails Council.
Well, and even the approving authorities and the conservation elements that are in here as well. And everybody is on the same page, but we want to make sure there's a record of it. So that's what we're doing tonight.
Does the motion lock in all these fees as they're set, like your engineering fees?
No.
Okay.
No. It's more the intent. For example, the Crow Creek stabilization, if the state, when they come down and look at each one of the individual sites, feels like that money is not warranted there, excuse me, we would likely move that money into more of the stormwater disconnects that Daryl and Sean have listed.
So this is just a proposal? These are not set in stone in any way?
It's a budget. It's a, it gives us, you know, for example, if you wanted to decrease the amount given to the university or increase, it lets them know where they're headed with the funds.
These will come back to us again for another vote before we authorize.
Yep. All of the projects will be either publicly bid or a quote process, so you'll have an opportunity at that point to continue with it or not.
Well, I just had a question to follow up on Jessica's concern. Pervious parking lot is not pervious anymore, right?
That's the problem. Because once you install it, you know, how do you maintain it in the wintertime? You're going to salt it, you're going to sand it, and then it's no longer pervious anymore. And so that's the point. And you're also paying $460,000 for something essentially plus, you know, your maintenance costs of maintaining it, and a regular parking lot would not cost that.
The $400,000, as I understand it, Melanie, is kind of a plug-in number right now. I think the estimate should come in much lower. And in fact, the question that I asked when we had our meeting was that, you know, would it be comparable to what you would ultimately pay for, you know, well, obviously, you know, part of it is the infrastructure that goes underneath the parking lot itself, and that's where a lot of the cost is added, but the actual surface itself is not that much different than concrete.
The rough estimate on difference between standard and pervious is about 50%. It's 50% higher to do a capital cost, to do a pervious rather than a standard. And as far as my plug-in numbers, like I said, we work with the urban conservationists. They essentially have to approve our designs. They've been at this position, let's see, this is the first, this is the second year these awards have been given, so, let me, how do I put this? There's not a lot of standards on what to expect them to approve. I guess we may have some back and forth, some things that may cost more than what anticipated or less than anticipated, so we want to make sure we have enough money budgeted to get what we need.
And if we come in under budget on a lot of this stuff, then we have extra money, and then we can just invent new projects for their approval, and then we can do other things.
Yep. A couple of things we've tossed around is, of course, more storm disconnects, obviously more hands-on workshops. There's some surface restoration type activities that would be great for our local landscapers to understand, doing some hands-on workshop with that. You could also purchase conservation easements, which would keep a property from getting either developed or farmed within a certain area that may help stabilize banks or just limit the runoff to Crow Creek. So there are a lot of different places that we can spend the money, but this is our starting point.
How much time do we have to spend the money?
You have until the treatment plant and the conveyance project is completed. The most recent report from McClure is the treatment plant will be completed 21 to 24 months from when they go to bids. So we're looking at about two years from now that we have to use the money. And I have done a drawdown schedule where a lot of MUM's money and the, obviously, the recreation center project would get spent in 2015, as well as half of Soil Water Conservation District's money would be '15, with the remainder, including a lot of the Crow Creek stuff, would happen in 2016. It's on how I match up the loans and the percentages, and it worked out better than I hoped.
So your involvement with these projects is included in the engineering portion here, is that right?
Yes.
So the city's not paying extra to have you do this?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve the sponsored projects list.
So moved.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
One question. The committee that you've been working with or the people that have, so there's been lots of conversation about this, and this is what is final?
Uh huh. Yes.
Okay. Because the last that I had heard, that wasn't the case, so that's why I was just curious where, how that got from there to being okay with this, so just wanted to make sure.
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Plornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
No.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. This council, as far as my report, tomorrow will be our negotiation meeting with the CAT Committee, and we'll get an idea tomorrow of what our grant award's going to be. The following day is the August Vision Iowa and CAT Board meeting, so presumably, whatever is recommended tomorrow will then go to the board the following day for their approval. So it would be Wednesday officially before we know what that amount is and that it would be approved. Obviously, we anticipate that whatever is recommended is going to be approved the next day, but that's when we will officially know, so we'll get word out on that as quickly as we can. Last Thursday, we had a couple of representatives from Cardinal Capital who had expressed interest in purchasing the Logan Apartment Building, visit the property again. They had an opportunity to do that. I'm going to be having a follow-up meeting with them tomorrow to basically have a discussion about, you know, proceeding with a sort of a formal bid from their side. We've had a conversation about where we anticipate what the expectations are for selling the property, and I think they are going to come in with a serious offer on that, so we'll wait and see how that goes, but they did make a visit last week, just want to make everybody aware of that. We'll move on to our committee reports. Water, Sewer, and Utilities Committee.
The committee met on noon last Friday. We discussed the rate study that was done in April of 2014 for the water side of our projects, and we found that we had more questions that needed to be answered before we could bring anything formal to the council at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next, Ways and Means Committee Report.
Yes, our committee met before the meeting this evening at 6:15, and we had on the line Kristin Cooper-Billingsley from Ayers Law Firm. She informed us that we are, we need actually 84 days in order to get our ballot initiative filed and put on the ballot. The purpose of our discussion with her was to consider the rewording of the ballot initiative to reward or reallocate the income from local option sales tax. And it's 85 days till our November election, but even though we're one day shy of that, we don't have it on our agenda this evening. We'd have to have a published agenda in order to vote on something tonight. And so we've essentially missed the deadline for November. However, the funds from that allocation process wouldn't be available until next July in any event, and so we could either do a special election in March if we are interested, or we could just simply wait until next November and then put the whole thing off a little more. We did discuss some issues about it. First of it is, you know, the language, what language should we use, you know, property tax relief, the amounts. We didn't finalize any kind of language that we might put in whenever that initiative, whenever we have it. But there were two things that actually came up that we thought we should clarify before we make a recommendation to the whole council on this matter. One is, we want to make it clear about what the implications might be to, if the initiative were to suggest to the public to vote towards, to reallocate the funds from the sewer portion of the local option sales tax, which is presently 25% of our money goes towards our wastewater There was some feeling that because of the rate structure for our sewers rates, that they could get by without that allocation, but then it wasn't clear to the Ways and Means if, you know, there's some expectation in the budget that that amount would continue for some time to service debt that was already incurred for sewer work. And so we want that very clear to us before we make a recommendation to the whole council. I hope I explained that clearly enough.
It's clear as mud, John.
As clear as mud.
Clear as mud. It wasn't clear.
That was not clear.
Somebody else want to explain it more clearly?
My take on it is this, that currently, our local option sales tax is segregated into different parts for streets, sewers, payoff of debt from the civic center, and then other reasonable and-
Community betterment.
Projects, community betterment. The 25% that goes to sewer is a movement of money from the local option sales tax directly into the sewer department budget. And from that budget, then, there are bills that are paid for past debt, as well as maintenance and current construction. And it is not completely clear as to whether that money is actually going directly to paying off SRF funding that was done for the sludge storage tank and other projects that the city has completed prior to this round of borrowing that we're going to make for our sewer improvements over the next seven years. In that, we need to have a little bit more review of the sewer department budget so that we can find out if that money has been moving towards pay down of debt, as it's been earmarked, and that is the question that has arisen out of our meeting earlier today. And I think that the committee, my feeling from the committee was, is that we still want to maintain the 50% going towards streets, as always, because that does pay down general obligation bonds, which goes directly to reduction of property tax for projects that were done here in Fairfield. And we also want to try and maintain our reduction of debt for the civic center, because the payoff in that was not as far out now as what we had initially planned with it. So that would free money up at that particular point in time. But the sunset on the local option sales tax itself is still out another three to four years before it has to be renewed again.
It's actually 19.
Nineteen.
Okay, five years, so we're about midstream in this round of the local option sales tax.
I would just mention that we don't know at this point, you know, whether those funds that have been flowing into there have been actually used to reduce debt for some of those projects. It's also possible that they were just going into capital reserves, so that's part of what we have to determine.
Thank you for-
I agree.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that portion of the report. And so the other thing that we wanted to check on before we make a recommendation is actually what the expense might be for a special election in March compared to waiting for a regular election in November. And so based on all that, the council will meet again after we have that information, and then at that time, hopefully, we'll make a recommendation about the wording of this new ballot initiative.
Okay, thank you, John. Next, Economic Development Committee Report, Jessica.
Yeah, so I just wanted to basically update that we had our first Housing Task Force meeting, and we have partnered with FIDA to work on the housing needs assessment and where we're going and what we need to do, and get direction from this task force to give to the committee and to the council. So we had our first meeting, and Economic Development has sent out the survey to the public and to local businesses, and tomorrow on their website, growfairfield.com, they'll have the actual survey. I think you've said, Adam said he'd received about 100 responses so far, so it's going well, but we want input from everyone so that we can know which direction we're going to go with the Housing Task Force. But all in all, they're a really great group, and we had a productive first meeting, so I just wanted to encourage everyone to go on there and take the survey.
Thanks, Jessica. And I think the survey was a very good idea, because our real estate opportunities are so nuanced, it'll be good to get some direct feedback from folks in town, so I think that's very good.
No, I didn't, I don't recall getting an email about this or anything. Were there emails sent out about it?
There were, but I don't know to what group specifically, so.
It'd be nice, I mean, if we're looking for more input-
We're looking for input from, you know, residents, employers, building, you know, landlords, things like that, so.
I think Adam sent it to the council, he's writing it down right now.
And I believe there was a press release done too, wasn't there, Adam?
There was.
On it, so it was published and-
Right. Is that everything, Jessica?
Yeah, that's all I had to say. Yeah, Andy took care of letting everybody know about it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, council. Next, we have an item that we'll be discussing in closed session, so at this point in time, we'll ask the council chambers to clear.
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Revolinsky to go into a closed session as per Iowa Code 21.5J.